Welcome and good evening, everybody. You're now at the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the Town of Halifax for April 24th, 2018. We are currently being filmed by Area 58 Community Access Television. Available to you on community access television stations and YouTube. And as is our custom, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will join me, thank you.
Whoa, I almost tipped on your bag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I put it under there.
Yeah, leave it there for me to kick around. Approval of the agenda. Have you looked at the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda before us.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready.
Yeah, I'm ready for you.
Okay. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 92 for $393,493.27. Vendor warrant number 93 for $41,135.56. Withholding warrant number 94 for $141,715.40. Ambulance commitment number 4A for $56,367. Ambulance commitment number 4B for $56,895.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. We almost did a duet. Aye. Okay, that'd be funny. All right. I move to approve the following warrant number 95 for, vendor warrant number 95 for $287,757.88.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the payment of the Selectmen's bills dated April 24th, 2018. Law for $1,463.05 to Deutsch Williams. Selectmen's expense account for $187.50 for automated business solution, which is for the jamming of the copier machine. And we have another law account for $132 for Matthew and Bender Company, which is our mass law book subscriptions.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am done.
Okay. Typically, we would go to general mail, but we have an appointment at 7:35 with the Halifax Beautification Committee. And CNN is at 7:35.
Thank you.
We're going to invite them up.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll speak as chairman of the committee. But we just wanted to share what we're doing this weekend with the Halifax Cleanup Day. And we've really kind of gotten, gone into this full speed ahead this year. Last year, our focus was primarily the garden, although we did Cleanup Day. And this year, we're really focusing on this. We've joined the Massachusetts effort, Make Massachusetts Beautiful. And we're one of many towns that are doing that. And one of the advantages of joining with them is we've gotten support from them, from the head of that committee. We also will turn in our figures, and they're working towards getting, becoming eligible for state grants, which we can really benefit from. So we're very excited. They designed t-shirts. We've got t-shirts. We've given you each, and Charlie was one of you, we've given you each gift bag.
Oh, thanks.
With the t-shirt that we're asking you to wear.
Oh, excellent.
Kim, I think I might be too big for you, but we have the smallest size, so not to worry.
No, this is twice.
Doesn't mention a particular college this time, right?
No, it doesn't. And then that's for that. Actually, for the benefit of that mistake, we ordered our t-shirts. And the first ones that came in, instead of saying Halifax, they said Emerson College.
Oh.
Everything else was right, but they couldn't use them. And Emerson had already had their day, their Cleanup Day. So we just gave some of them out, too. I mean, it's the bright color.
Yeah, they're great. I love it.
So we're actually doing something a little different. Last Saturday was Earth Day. We set up a table out there. It was a little bit frayed. And we gave some free bags. We have reusable garbage bag, reusable cloth grocery bag. And we're trying to get these out.
Yes.
So that makes people conscious of what we're doing and that there is an effort here. We're running Cleanup Week this year, which goes from Earth Day through Saturday, but people can do it whenever they want. Our hope is that we'll get people involved who take a spot, could be in their neighborhood, and just kind of keep, almost adoptive for the year and do it, clean it up two or three times. And we had a dumpster donated by C-Mat. C-Mat was very generous, donated the dumpster for us, which we've already started using. And that we have for the week. And we're encouraging people to bring their bags. United Way donated nice trash bags. And the Highway Department gave us gloves, surplus gloves that they had and couldn't use.
I'm like Carol Marrow.
Yeah. We also have some plastic gloves in there for people that don't want those heavy ones to go for cabbage cheese.
Those are great. Pick it up. Yeah.
They're great. You just go out walking during, you know, if you go for a walk.
You can keep them in your pocket. They don't take a lot of.
Yeah, no, these are a great idea.
Yeah. And so, and then in here, we've also developed guidelines for people. We have Boy Scout troops that have committed. We have Girl Scout troops that have committed. We have, Ollie Woodick has some people that have committed to help. We have just random local people who have come forward and said, I'll do this, I'll do that. We've been in touch. We're not sure that we have them yet, but Plymouth County, House of Correction. Unfortunately, when we talked to them last, they didn't, are unfortunate for us, but not for them, they didn't have any inmates available to do any service projects, but he said to call back. And we may have a few prisoners sometime during this week or the weekend, but at this point, we don't.
We've actually had them last spring, was it? Yeah, last summer, we had them help us out on 106.
They were very willing to do that, as long as he has the personnel. And he doesn't always.
Ted, could you help with that?
Then the other thing I will say about C-Mat is they, C-Mat, is that right? I keep saying it wrong. They are very supportive, and they, we aren't working on this yet, but we will be as soon as this is over. They are very interested in adopting the island at the corner of 58 and 106.
That would be a wonderful thing.
That's our next big effort, is to try and get some of the public spaces. So that, that will be good. A private citizen did that last year, and we're trying to get some people, our companies, to adopt that one. So we have that one taken care of, but we're not, we're not going to move forward with that. We haven't done anything. The garden's doing great. The garden will be cleaned up and planted before Memorial Day, before the Memorial Day activity. But obviously, we haven't had any springs, so.
Yeah.
Till today.
Today, yeah.
Why? Till today. Till today. Well, yesterday wasn't too bad, but today was great. And then the last thing, I mean, as far as this Halifax Cleanup, the culmination is this Saturday. I mean, people are working, and we're meeting at Town Hall with anyone who's willing to help and would like an assignment. We have bags. We have, I mean, trash bags and t-shirts. And we're meeting at 10 o'clock, right up in front of Town Hall for anyone who needs some guidance and direction and wants to help. So we're excited, because we've had a lot of positive feedback, and we have bags.
Thank you so much.
Anyone who wants them. We wanted you to see some of what we have, so that's why we.
We certainly have enthusiasm, which is where it all starts.
We do have enthusiasm. We have a good committee. Everybody's working hard.
Excellent.
And it's a full committee.
This is a great slogan. It says, "A kid who picks up trash is likely, likely won't grow up to be an adult who litters trash."
Yeah. The big thing that we're hearing from people and that we're seeing is, well, there's a lot of trash, but nips.
Nips. I know.
Something that we might want to look at down the road because.
Eliminating.
Amazingly, my front yard's kind of open, so I am subject to quite an assortment of nips out in front.
Yeah. And there, actually, there's not that big of an assortment.
Schnapps seems to be, yes.
Seems to be everyone's favorite, but there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
All over town.
Yeah.
And we also, the other thing I'll mention is we, the Highway Department, Fire Department, Police Department are all supporting us in this effort. Highway Department has made it clear that if anyone finds needles or syringes or sharps at any time, not to touch them. And we, they're in our, that's the first thing in our guidelines, to call the Fire Department, and they will send someone out immediately to pick them up. The Highway Department has, they've been great. They have said, if you come across any large items, tires, whatever, large items, call them, and they will send someone out to find, you know, tell them where it is, and they'll send someone out to get them. So we're really, we're in good shape.
Is Steve having a crew on this week, on Saturday?
I don't know. I don't think so, because what he said is people, the other thing is if people don't want to come up or can't come up to the Town Hall to dispose of the trash they pick up, he will pick up, they can call and tell us where the, him or where the bags are, and he'll send someone out Monday.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So, you know, we're getting all sorts of support.
What makes it a team effort, which is how public gets done the best.
Absolutely. We're all excited. We're all happy, and we're all hoping that people will stop littering.
And you bring up a great point, Charlie. When it comes to nips, does the Board of Selectmen have any sort of power over the selling nips in town?
Oh, yeah. Check.
Because I hear that a lot, and I know I live on the 106.
One of our challenges, though, is, for instance, I know when I've done pickup along 106, I have a fairly good idea of where those nips are coming from. They're not from Halifax. They're from East Bridgewater, or Bridgewater.
Oh.
Same thing on 36. I mean, that's the biggest, we have these 36, 58, 106.
Well, I know mine.
Yeah, I mean, I can check. What I'd rather see them, see is just make, not even a five cent deposit, make it a dollar deposit or something like that. Make it worthwhile, and people might, if not the people drinking them, bring them back. Somebody else would be.
Well, in addition to the, to the littering aspect of it, it suggests people are drinking and driving.
Yes.
Oh, it's more than.
Well, they like that fireball. It's fireball is like the number one fireball is huge on my front lawn. And the schnapps. And the schna, I get a lot of schnapps.
Schnapps, yeah.
So somebody likes schnapps.
There's a couple of them.
Yeah. Anyway.
It's bad. They're everywhere. But we're, we're excited about the support that we've got. We just want to share what we're doing with you.
Well, we certainly appreciate all your efforts and, and again, your enthusiasm, which is, you know, hopefully contagious, and it seems to have been contagious, which will help immensely.
Charlie's been big help.
I know, Charlie, I mean, even years before this committee was, you, you were here on the Saturday Cleanup Day. I mean, you've been so committed to the effort, too.
He's been huge to us.
Yeah.
I mean, to leave you out, Charles.
That's fine, no. You've been doing, you folks have been doing more work than anybody else has for a number of years, so this is great.
So do you have a t-shirt, Charlie?
Give me a whole.
Oh, okay. Just want to make sure.
And you all have bags, and you all have gloves, and you all have guns.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
What we have to do now is get out there and use.
So he's taking attendance for just.
And we'd really like you to take pictures and put it on the Halifax Beautification Committee as an example, because then people will see, it kind of like, I almost think before was that the water challenge where you dumped the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of get back.
Yeah, right.
In the interim, in the next few days, if you want more information about Saturday or picking up in the interim, should they call or email?
Well, I'm glad, because all of ours are, so they, anyone in our, in the committee really, we're all just.
Well, we can disseminate contact information, too, in the Selectmen's office.
And if they like.
Have you given, have you given the guidelines to this chairman here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much, really. Really. Thank you doesn't seem enough, but it's a little lot of work, and we really appreciate it. And this is awesome. Awesome.
I just want to say, it doesn't have to be like a huge, giant project. You just clean up in front of your yard and then get the neighbors to do the same thing, pass it on, pass it on. If we got all 2174 units plus or minus to do it, then the, the.
Yeah, that's a point.
Yes.
So even if it's just in front of the house.
Right. Thank you so much. Thanks for our gifts.
Something's out of control.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will. All right. I'll be in touch. Thank you so much, Amy. Thank you so much, Candy.
Good evening.
That was awesome. What a good way to start our day.
You guys, um.
7:45. Yeah, I don't know if anybody's here on the Evergreen Revocation Hearing. No. Yes, the Evergreen Revocation Hearing?
No.
Liquor store.
So, just to update from the Collector Treasure, they're on schedule for their payments. What I'd recommend is the Board continue the hearing two months from now, which I believe, where did I put it on? You know, we've got it on my list of notes. Oh, there we go. June 25th at 7:45.
Okay.
7:45 on June 25th.
Okay.
To continue the revocation hearings. These are on schedule.
I'll make a motion that we continue to June 25th at 7:45.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to go and turn the heat off.
Okay. We'll wait for it.
We'll wait here. I just have to put something on my calendar. Dog park meeting.
What time is tomorrow's meeting?
Tomorrow is at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Yeah.
It's taking a long time to turn off that.
I know. It's just, thank you. I just had to add something for the dog park on my calendar. You know, I think those gloves make a big deal difference for people that want to pick up trash, because.
Much better.
Yeah, especially the cigarette butts. She's right. Those little.
Next thing, you thought till 8:00, so.
Because people think the world is their ashtray, and they drive down the road and they just throw their butts up. I hate it. The world is not your ashtray.
Mont Pontet Pond, we had the 319 grant from the feds and DEP. This is the amendment contract to use the money for aluminum sulfate treatment rather than the pump house design.
Okay, yes. And I'll make a motion that Tom sign that contract, but while he's signing that, Charlie, may I ask you?
Yeah.
Did Mary Ann Moore send you her resignation?
Yes, it's in the pile here.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure.
So they can vote, and then you need to sign everything in blue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want me to please you?
Um, just on.
No, I was just waiting for everyone.
On the School Resource Officer meeting, Tom, somewhere, I guess, had, so much email from the school committee, had arranged a meeting with you possibly for Monday on April 30th about the idea of the School Resource Officer.
I saw some emails to that. I don't know that it was confirmed, but.
Okay, as far as I know, it's happening.
Okay, I'll save the date in any of.
What I wanted to ask is, should I post it for the Board in case a form is present? Because I, I don't know whether.
There's no harm in doing that.
Okay, I will do that, then. Use of the Town Hall green. Boy Scouts would like to use the green on Saturday, July 14th, for a bottle drive. Obviously, they run plenty of these without a problem.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the town green for Saturday, July 14th, for a bottle drive from 9:00 to noon.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Burge Pond and the Elm Street access, the work will begin on May 15th. I got a note from Jason Zimmer from Fisheries and Wildlife confirming that.
Oh, good. Perfect.
That'll be happening.
Yay.
Seal of weights and measures, change in fees. David Moore had sent a note in. He proposed a new fee schedule that would generate a bit more revenue, so the fees would cover the annual salary expenses for the seal, which is what we've tried to do in years past.
Yes.
But we've not changed the fees since 2010.
Oh.
They've been incremental, obviously increases in costs in the interim. So I correspond with David and talk with him about this. Needs a town meeting vote. We can't do it this May, but we can do it. Well, he, what he said is that most of the fees have been collected for the calendar year already.
Okay, so we can do it in the fall?
So, yeah, whenever we have the next town meeting, if we have one, you know, I think there's a reasonable chance we'll have one in late August, early September, and we'll put on the warrant then, and he's aware of that. So that's set. $4 in the host community agreement. I'm still working on the last edits for the agreement. At this point, I'm hoping that between now and the 8th, we'll have a final version. They'll sign it, and I'll have it to the Board for their signatures on the 8th. The Board, as part of the Elm Street property sale to Fisheries and Wildlife, the Board needs to officially vote to declare that the 17.65 acre parcel on Elm Street, which is map 37 Lot A on the Assessors' Maps, is available for disposition. The Board could vote to do that.
I'll make a motion that we declare, do you want me to read what lot number it is?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we declare that the 17.65 acre parcel on Elm Street, map 37 Lot A on the Assessors' Map, is available for disposition.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Attorney Mayo continues to work on the agreement with Fisheries and Wildlife for the sale of the property. Use of the lots and graves account by the Cemetery Commissioners, who happen to be also the Board's Selectmen in Halifax.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to be bringing an article to town meeting.
Yep.
But the Board's, this is for a cab over engine truck with hook lift, sander, and plow, but the Board needs to approve use of the lots and graves trust fund for this purpose before the town meeting vote. This is for $75,000.
Yep.
There's 148 in there right now.
I will make a motion that we authorize the use of $75,000 from the trust fund for cemeteries for Article 19 of the annual town meeting in order to purchase a cab over engine truck with a hook lift, sander, and plow to replace number 70.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Mary Ann Moore has resigned as the Halifax representative on the Central Plymouth County Water District Advisory Board. She's, I think, she's been on there for four years. She's done a great job.
Awesome.
I mean, she's been very involved with Mont Pontet during that time, but she no longer has, because of her other commitments, has adequate amount of time to continue serving as the town's representative.
And she's also been pretty active in the Mont Pontet Watershed Association, and she's the one that's sort of spearheaded all of their fundraisers to get funding. So it's going to be a tremendous loss to us.
So if the Board would accept the resignation.
We'll accept the resignation with a letter to her thanking her for her many years of service.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Second. All those in favor?
I mean, we'll do some PR to fill the vacancy. Obviously, I'll send a letter to the Watershed Association, see if someone is interested.
I know they were reorganizing today, Charlie.
Right, for a meeting. Um, let's see what we got here. Highway Department, purchase of a 2006 trackless MT6. The Highway Department went out to bid for this and received one bid from CN Wood of Wilburn for $62,000. Two copies of the award contract are to be signed by all the members who are present.
Did we feel that was a good.
What was the article for?
Yes.
The article, yeah.
Yeah.
That was last year's purchase.
Steve's comfortable with this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we sign the contract in order to purchase the.
MT6.
Yes, thank you. Trackless MT6.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. So we both sign it?
Yes. Then, another contract. This is the future trash disposal contract for fiscal '19 with Holland Disposal for $97,9241. Again, this would be one where all the Selectmen sign.
I will make a motion that we sign a contract with Holland Disposal for fiscal year 2019 for $97,982.41.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ambulance abatement for March 2018 is $46,641.98.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just to tell the Board, we did get a quote from IA for our property insurance. There's been no change to that. There were changes in the individual policies, but they washed each other out in terms of ups and downs. There's no action for the Board to take, but I just wanted the Board to be aware of that since it's something that falls under the Board in my jurisdiction. We will have, I hope Kent Bedrow will come in two weeks from now to fill a vacancy on Youth and Recreation. He had sent in a talent bank form, and Youth and Recreation Commission is recommending his appointment. We just haven't heard back from him, but I'm hoping he'll be in on the 8th. On the zoning bylaw committee, we've had two people indicate formally that they're interested in serving. Gordon Andrews, the one who's on the Finance Committee, but he would then be a citizen at large. He'll be off the Finance Committee within a few weeks. And then Alan Diaz from the Board of Health. I've been told verbally that Gordon Andrews, the elder who's on the planning board, is also interested, but I haven't received any official confirmation.
I believe Mr. Bassar from the Zoning Board of Appeals expressed some interest as well.
Oh, he would be excellent.
That's what I told him.
Um, I don't know if the Board wants to wait to get something formal from those two people, and I'll notify both, you know, the two Boards, look, can you get something in writing to us by May 8? I do have, you know, a, one concern simply is, I, I'm welcoming the diverse nature of the members, but I also want to make sure that they understand that their personal interests can override the general interests of the town in a sense of, they're not there, if they're property owners or business owners, they're not there to make change law, changes in the bylaws to their own benefit. And I know there's a process, even whatever changes they recommend, still go to the planning board for recommendations, still go to town meeting for a vote, but it would be better to make that clearer at the beginning.
Yeah. And I, you know, I sometimes have issues with having members of the same family attend, be on a committee, so I'm not so comfortable with that, to be honest.
We haven't made any appointments yet. We haven't made any appointments yet.
No. Just because then you've already gone, well, not...
Right.
Potentially, but I know I don't agree with everything.
Opium lawsuit, there's not, hasn't been a lot of interest from the chiefs about this. If the board wants, I can still set up with one, a meeting with one of the law firms that's handling the suit, but neither the fire chief nor the police chief thought there were a lot of costs associated with this for the town.
There isn't right now because we have people, we have Brockton Hospital covering our costs for Narcan, so.
Sure. I'll just let that sit. If it comes up, we'll have the information available. Uh, let's see, highway contract. This isn't the contract contract. This is a memorandum of understanding, just an agreement that we'll bring this to the town meeting. Still something that the union would, wanted the board to sign off on, which is we're agreeing that if the 2% is funded at town meeting, there's a separate article for that purpose, then we'll amend the contract accordingly.
I'll make a motion that we sign the memorandum of understanding for the Highway Department Union.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So next couple of things, I think are appointments anyway.
Yep.
Just on Davis Automotive, I talked with a treasurer collector today. She had not received any further communication or payments from Davis Automotive.
Oh.
So the board, a couple of weeks ago, had officially revoked license to start tomorrow. I'll send them a formal certified letter indicating that. There's nothing preventing the board from rescinding that vote sometime in the future, but as of tomorrow, both their fuel storage permit and their Class II license are revoked.
Oh.
That's unfortunate, yeah.
I feel terrible about that, but we have to do it.
That's, and that's what I've got, so I...
Oh, we have a road cut.
Well, you talked to Pam about that.
Yes, Pam, we have a road cut.
Is this the Dunkin' Donuts one?
We have two.
Two road cuts.
Yeah, we do. Um, we have...
So we have ninth, we have 3/9th Ave.
Well...
Oh, no. Can I do, oh, okay. To install new gas service. Police detail is not needed. Highway had no stipulations. Water had no issues. Conservation had no issues, so it is going to be a 4x6 road cut tie into a 4x35 road cut trench.
What was that?
It's on 9th Ave. Sounded like I knew that.
Which is not the Dunkin' Donuts one.
Yes.
That's, is that approved or...
I nailed that, by the way.
Yes, you did. Perfect. We all know.
This is on 9th Ave, see?
Okay.
So it looks pretty basic. Again, there was no stipulations from any of the...
Highway didn't have any?
Yeah. Everybody was totally fine with water, everybody.
And you presented...
Building inspector, yes, I will make a motion that we approve a building inspector just required a trenchment permit, so, yep.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. The next one is 355 Plymouth Street, i.e. Dunkys.
Dunkys.
That is, it requires one detail officer. Highway had no stipulation, water, conservation had none. And this is for a gas service, and it's a 4x6 road cut tie into a 4x40 road cut trench.
Yeah, because the gas is on the other side of the street.
Yes, yes, so.
You have a motion?
That is a motion, yes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Okey dokey, spidokie.
And that is, that's it for that?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm just giving Charlie these contracts back?
Yeah, I'll just put them in the green folder and Pam will take them away from me.
Okay, so those are all the contracts?
Yeah.
And these are the road cuts?
I need to go over where...
Yeah.
The signature is appropriate on those. All right, it's 8 o'clock, so we're going to move ahead to Anne Marie Reed, a trailer permit.
Hi.
Hi.
And the reason we're doing this is the bylaws for the town stipulate that the building inspector can issue a short-term trailer permit, which then, if there's a need for a longer term, it comes to the board's selectmen, we notify the abudders, as public notice on the website, et cetera. And that's why we're here at this point. And Ms. Reed then can explain the circumstances and how long she feels she will need to have the trailer permit extended.
I had a fire in the house in March, and that's why I'm in trouble.
So you don't have any word from the contractor or...
Have you haven't settled with the insurance yet?
I'm under the law company.
Oh.
I'm just giving you a reminder.
Oh, that was very kind of you, thank you.
The state laws have just called once. I don't know if that...
Yeah, yeah.
No wardens. We're moving to the outside.
Okay.
And we sent out all the abudders.
Oh, yes, we do.
Is there anybody here to discuss that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any neighbors here to speak to?
I don't, this isn't a no-brainer.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion that we extend the permit to...
On the application, it's a 10 months.
Would be a total of 12.
Right, right. So it's a 12, it's till March?
Because the first 60, the first 60 days were from the building inspector. And so that they, so under, so as he mentioned...
What was the date? No, I don't need that, but thank you, sir. I need the date of the fire. Was March what?
March 15.
Okay, so I'll extend it to, I'll make a motion to extend, extend the...
Well, when was the original trailer permit issued?
Um, it was... It was, it was, uh, issued 3/14/18.
Okay, so I will have the permit extended through March 14, 2019.
And if it isn't finished by then, you just go back.
It doesn't finish by March.
I didn't tell you.
I'm so sorry.
Insurance companies, they're, they're pretty tricky.
I'm so sorry.
Two dogs in a small mobile.
I, I, I understand, trust me.
Yeah, I know you're motivated, so, yeah, thank you.
It, it, it always seems nonproductive to me and not cost-effective that they're willing to pay the rental on a mobile for a long period of time and yet not settle. It just doesn't make economic sense to me, but I suppose it does to them.
I guess, I don't know.
But you made the motion?
Yes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Maybe by July 19.
Well, it can't happen fast enough.
All right.
It can't happen fast enough.
We're sending good vibes your way. That'll be as soon as possible. Thank you for coming in. Thank you so much for driving her. That was very kind of you.
I can't drive after dark.
Oh.
Well, thank you.
All right, be safe.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Okey dokey.
Well, you know, I mean, I know if formally you say 15, but we already had the previous meeting with the hearing on the unregistered vehicles, so if the board wants to, I guess either it takes a recess for...
Or do you want to do the, is your appointment here? No?
We don't.
Okay.
I didn't get...
You didn't get down there?
No.
Well, the planning board did, we're, why come on up? Come on up. Yes, please.
We'll start early.
We did get a note from the planning board. They, I guess there was some confusion about the number of vehicles that you needed the license for.
Yeah, that was my...
Girl, that's, I mean, because originally, what we're doing is an unregistered vehicle permit, so the vehicles that already have the proper plates and everything won't require, won't fall under that permit. So the planning board, I guess, met with you all last week and worked out, I guess, three or four vehicles.
I thought it was four or five, maybe.
Well, the note we got, why would we call it four then? Because the note we got from the planning board was three to four.
Yeah.
So they, they wanted just three to four vehicles?
Right. They said, does that require a new site plan? And requests following restrictions on a permit is three to four unregistered vehicles.
Okay.
So if the board could say four, unless there were other conditions. The only thing I would think is that, I mean, is that probably there should be a limit as to how long a particular vehicle's there, because if you're using it to take it away, to take parts out, there's no reason to have it there, let's say, more than a year.
Right.
Is that reasonable? I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, very reasonable.
Okay, I will make a motion to allow four unregistered vehicles.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
You go.
All right, thank you. That was super sensitive.
Do I have to pay $25 a dollar or something?
What I need to do is I gotta make up the...
Not in front of everybody.
I brought my check.
I'm kidding.
Let's do it, then make up the permit. Okay, then I'll have the board sign it, because I didn't know how many they were going to approve tonight, so I didn't want to...
So you'll call me and I'll call the board.
Yeah, I'll give you a ring, yeah. Okay, once they've signed up, call you and then you can make it up.
He pulled his back out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you look like you were suffering a little there.
Oh, that's a drag.
Whatever you think.
Okay, yeah.
Take care of yourself. Thank you so much.
You do have, the, let's see, the other appointments you have are at 8:30 and 8:35. The 8:30, whenever that person came in, it's not a hearing, so you could do that. The 8:35, I don't...
Are you here for the 8:35?
No.
No?
Just here for the River Street updates with the Solomos.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, do we have, I don't think we have an update.
There's no update. I mean, it's on, it's on the agenda, but we, I don't have any more information than I had two weeks ago, in the sense of, you know, we don't have, right now where things stand with that is that in terms of the planning, I mean, I don't know if they've gone through the site plan process on the planning board. You'd have, I can check and find out whether they got the site plan approved there. The pilot agreement is informally being negotiated. That's the financial agreement between the developer and the town. There are two articles at the town meeting. One is to vote to allow the town to negotiate the pilot, and then the second would be if we're done by that point on, by May 14th, to approve the pilot. But I don't have any more details. Were there things that you were looking?
Just, just that, I just saw on the website that it was on the agenda, so I didn't know.
Yeah, the other ones are...
Yeah, I mean, I'm obligated to sometimes to put things on the agenda in case it comes up, and this is one of those situations where nothing actually is developed really during the last two weeks.
Or...
We'll probably show up on the agenda again the 8th, but if you wanted to give a call ahead.
But even the other ones are...
You're welcome to be here also, by all means, but I'd be able to tell you even on Monday or Tuesday, December 38th, is there, you know, what's happening, then you can decide whether you want to come in or not.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm showing Tom where to sign.
Okay.
Because it's not clear.
Yes, it isn't.
She's very...
I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what's interesting is like on the front page, Charlie, it says contractor.
Yes, we're the contractor.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, see, that's why...
Are you Tracy?
I'm Maria.
Maria.
Oh.
Oh, hi, Maria. Oh.
You snuck in behind me.
Oh, come on up.
Well, I don't know, that's not good thinking.
Oh, we're super excited you're here.
Somebody snuck up on you.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, thank you so much. We're so excited that you're willing to do this.
I'm excited to do this.
Oh, I know you're going to be wonderful.
She's been great.
I know, I can't believe your resume. It's just incredible.
Thank you.
Really, very impressive.
So, long and short of it, she offered, we need to help, and as you can see, she's way overqualified for it, so it's what we like.
So you are here to be a matron?
I am.
Yay. And we're really, again, very excited that you're willing to step forward and do this. And your resume is just so impressive with your mental health background and your substance abuse clinician. I mean, that's pretty remarkable, so we're really excited to have you here. How long have you lived in Halifax?
I don't live in Halifax.
Oh, you don't?
I reside in Bridgewater.
Oh, okay, so you're close, so you can...
Aye.
Yes, perfect.
10, 12 minutes.
All right, then I won't give you the question that I always ask, which is, do you go to town meeting?
Escape that one. In Bridgewater, they no longer have town meetings. She can't go to Bridgewater.
I know, I know. Are you sad? Do you have any questions of us at all?
No, just...
Okay.
I'm happy with the resume and...
All right, so we, I would like to make a motion to appoint Maria Matthews Forte to the, as a matron for a term to expire on June 30, 2018. But don't be afraid of that date. That's when we normally renew them on an annual basis, and you won't need to come back to see us.
I will offer a very enthusiastic second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much for coming in. So sorry that, um, we had, well, actually, we took you early so you can get to...
Yes.
And you know what?
Did I need to sign it?
You need to go visit our town clerk during regular business hours to get sworn in.
I'll send you a letter.
And then fill out things with the treasurer's office.
And then I'll get that card, the town attorney to the town clerk, so that when you come in, you get sworn in, and then go sign that card, and you'll sign it, you give it to...
Yeah, and then you have the normal paperwork that you'll do through the treasurer's office for payroll and all those kinds of things, so.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, we're really very excited.
Thanks, okay.
And it works for a while.
Thank you, Stan.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, thanks.
Take care. Nice meeting you too. I hope I don't meet, meet you in the station.
Well, it's up to you, Kim.
Is Noreen coming? No, did, Chief, is...
Stop throwing those nips around.
Oh, that is... All right.
Is that all the business we have?
Well, except for Ms. Mahoney and, and that...
Is Noreen coming or are you staying for the dog hearing?
She's coming in, I'll stay.
You don't have to stay.
Oh, I look for these things.
I know. I know.
I'm not sure I'm taking you seriously.
Should we take a recess?
I would say so, yeah.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we take a recess.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome back. It's now 8:35, and we have a hearing continuation for Kimberly Mahoney, and this is a dog hearing. I don't believe Ms. Mahoney is here, but I think we can still proceed.
So we had asked that Ms. Mahoney engage with a dog trainer in order to work with the dog to see how it can be controlled with its aggressive behavior. She was to have a letter with what the trainer had thought of the dog after being evaluated, along with a plan of action with an end date around how long it would take in order to mitigate the aggressive behavior. Before us here is Tracy Marzelli, who is from Perfected Pup. She had sent Noreen an email stating that due to some personal issues, she was unable to meet the dog, and she wanted to talk to us a little bit about that. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry, and the chair is, you're the chair? Hi. So Tracy Marzelli, I'm from Little Barrow. I am...
Kim talks a lot and makes everybody think she's the chair. I'm sorry.
She will be, just wait.
Just a few weeks. I'm sorry.
Kim did contact me on April 13th, and apparently she had been trying before that to find a dog, someone who could work with the dog. We had met under different circumstances a while ago, and I had given her my card so she could have my contact information for something that was unrelated to dogs. She found the card, contacted me. I have not been able to, and it's, it's totally on me. I have, I'm not actually taking clients. I work mainly now with rescue groups, so I really haven't been taking homeowners. I usually take a dog into my house. It's usually a dog that's aggressive, and I work intensely with the dog for about six weeks and then turn it back over to rescue if the dog is able to be safely adopted out. I have the benefit, though, of having a lot of information before I bring a dog in. A dog is usually safer evaluated if there's a bite history. Usually the ACO or the rescue group of the owner can give me some sort of indication of where the bite is on the Dunbar scale.
Oh.
You're probably familiar with the Dunbar.
How aggressive the...
Well, it's a scale of one to six, one being no contact at all, usually an air snap or some other aggressive behavior, six being death of the person that was, you know, which is, you never, almost never see a six. But the, it tells you, the rating tells you what you can do as far as rehab. Not the plan that you would make, but the type of effort, the type of skill, and the type of, it gives you a kind of an idea of the dog's intention when they bite. Without witnessing it, I can't tell you what triggered the dog. Dogs don't bite for no reason at all. They have a reason, we may not understand it, but they have a reason. And where are their biggest problems? Because usually owners, the owners inadvertently do something that encourages the aggression in the dog, of the dog reaction, aggressive reaction. So without witnessing, without having a Dunbar bite, the best I can promise is what I put in my email, that I can evaluate the dog, and I can do that this weekend. My schedule plays up a little bit this weekend. I can do an evaluation of the dog. It's a little bit problematic for me with the dog being in a quarantine, and I'm not asking you to live the quarantine. I encourage it, because public safety is always, every trainer, every behaviorist, public safety is why we do this. It's not right that a dog should, I don't believe that every dog gets to live if, if it's a public safety issue. I have only one time recommended that a dog be euthanized, and unfortunately, they made me take the dog to be euthanized, but it has, if it's necessary, I do recommend it. So what I can do is I can do an evaluation on the dog. I'm gonna have to work something out with Kim, because I don't like to do an evaluation in their home. It just sets the dog up for failure because they focus on the territory last...
Yes.
Right, you have to remove them from there.
And an evaluation is an hour and a half, and under the best of circumstances. So I will do the evaluation this weekend, it's just that logistically, we really have to work something else so that I can get a true read of what, where the dog is in temperament, and where Kim is, and her ability, because it's not just going to be whether or not I can, because I can rehab almost any dog, but if it's not something that the owner can carry on...
And reinforce.
...the dog's life, and reinforce, then I, I can't, I won't, I can't work with a dog that is setting up for failure, because all we're doing is delaying for the, for the dog.
And that is my fear.
Yep.
I think that she has the best of intentions.
Yep.
I do, I think she loves her dog, but I don't know that she has the ability to, she's got a lot going on in her life, so that's my personal concern.
And I, I would have to agree with you, and I, I will reinforce what I said as far as if the owner is incapable of carrying out any plan. My plan is only effective for the amount of time that I'm working with the dog. I can get them to, it's obedience is the same way. If you don't keep training the dog or keep the dog in their good habits, they lose that too, so it's...
Right, it isn't a one-and-done thing, yeah. And, and that was my concern, too, is whether she had the capacity to, eh, do it, take somebody on to, in fact, evaluate and/or work with the dog, and then the resources and the time to reinforce any good habits.
Noreen, could you remind me when the quarantine is ending?
It's, I have to double-check with the Board of Health, but I believe it's the first week in June.
Oh.
I mean, because that, that happened on the 4th of February, so it was a four-month quarantine, so, but...
Because Ms. Mahoney was able to bring the dog to a vet finally, because the dog had not been brought to a vet because she was concerned about his be, her behavior, can we allow the dog to go to a trainer? Isn't that sort of the same thing, or no?
I mean, like, again, we'll, we'll double-check, we get a new animal inspector, and we'll run it by him and see what he thinks. I think that would be the best. I would love to have him evaluated fairly, and the sooner the better.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm game with it, but I don't want another bite, because we're gonna start all over again.
And are you insured?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And I, we actually have rabies vaccination as well, so...
Okay, perfect.
Well, shall we call rabies vaccination? Yes.
And how long have you had rabies?
I have to go to the doctor, I always say I have to go to the vet. Oh, and vets need, no, I have to go to a doctor.
Wow.
It's, it's not without its risks. I've, I've been bit a lot.
Do you wear gloves?
I have Kevla. I don't have a full suit, I have Kevla gloves, they go up to my elbows.
He did lunge and get somebody's...
And I don't know the circumstances. Right, I mean, none of us do, really. I mean, he, he, he indicated that he had bent down to protect himself because the dog was barking, or to...
Oh, I, yeah, no, I think he, I thought he bent down to say, oh, it's okay, buddy, and then I think it lunged.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's like, we don't know what might have been a trigger, a hat might have been a trigger.
Yeah, glasses and all kinds of things.
I didn't see it, and it's like, come here, baby, you don't know how that person acted.
But we also know that he is very protective of the family.
Right. That's a problem for me. No dog, I have a Conny Corso, Italian master.
Oh.
He's a therapy dog. He works with children with cerebral palsy, he's retired now. People always say to me, he's protective of your house? No, I'm protective of my house. He, if he's protective of the house, he thinks I can't do the job.
Exactly.
And that's, that's what I try to get people away from, that whole mindset of the dog needs to take a role.
Right.
The dog does not take a role, never. The dog will make the wrong mistake, the wrong decision every single time. Their, their resolution to solve any problem is to fight.
Yeah.
And, and that's the problem. Once they do it, it's a behavior, and it works, and it gets repeated, and the more often it gets repeated, the higher it is to train away from.
And would you agree that having a dog sleep with you or lay on the couch, like you're putting him in a higher pack?
That is, actually, that goes both ways, to be honest with you.
Oh, it does?
Yes, I allow my dogs on the, on the furniture, but they wait for permission to get there.
Okay.
So my dog will bark at me at 2:00 in the morning if he thinks that he, he needs permission to get on the bed, and he wants to get on the bed, but he won't get on the bed without it.
Okay. All right, thank you for that tip.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. So I will make a motion that we continue the dog hearing for two more weeks?
That's, for me, that's sufficient time.
Then we can get an evaluation, and then kind of go from there.
And then you can check with a new animal inspector to ensure that the dog will be able to be taken off property, only in the care...
I am gonna go there and do it.
Oh, you are?
I am going to go there and do it. I'm just, I don't know what we're gonna do logistically, maybe in the yard, is the dog allowed to be outside?
It can be, but it has to have a muzzle on when it's outside.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the muzzle, I would actually, usually require it.
Okay.
With a dog with a bite history, especially if it's, if it's three or higher on the Dunbar scale, I require it.
I would suspect that it's somewhere in that.
I'm surprised we haven't seen or heard from the person who was...
He was transported.
Will he put in for 7:35?
Yes.
So, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you for coming in so late at night and being here. Thank you for all you do to...
I'll be, I'll be, you'll go till like 10:30 at night. Our champion is a lot more gory.
Thank you so much.
Well, we like to get out early.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Thank you so much and for all you do, really.
See you soon.
Noreen, was I well behaved?
You did very well this time.
Thank you.
So I believe any motions have the motion to adjourn?
I'm so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.